Yes, that's what we agreed to.
Okay, so, so just want to be clear, it's not us, but if, you know, man's got a thousand, twelve, fifteen hundred feet of road running on three twenty-one, you couldn't get much better access than three twenty-one compared to Allen Shore.
Well, like I told Mr. Gaddis, the only thing, you know, and I hate to be cynical when it comes to working with people, but like I said, it's one thing to say it, it's another thing to put it on paper in black and white. And I know he's had, he's operated three of these things and sold all three of them, had them a long time, has done, I mean, does a great job with them. And I understand what you're saying, but what do you do, I mean, what, I mean, is it just the property just going to sit there forever?
No, eventually somebody will come along and they'll find a use for it that would justify them correcting Allen Shore, or they will get an entrance off of three twenty-one, which if it's going to be commercial property, really is where the entrance should be.
Well, that, I agree.
But Mr. Gaddis has made the commitment, you've made the commitment to do the repairs to Allen Shore's road.
Exactly.
So, I mean, can you not?
Yeah.
Can you not make it contingent? Can you not make it contingent that if you don't do them?
What I'm, what we talked about, and if we're still on the same page, it wasn't a repair. You go stand on Allen Shore, you have to take a deep breath if you pass somebody there going up that hill. What we talked about was a lane, a lane on the right side and a lane on the left side, not a, a little push out here, a little push out there, a full-fledged lane on both sides where traffic would not, you know, would not, somebody comes across the hill, you don't get run over, over across the hill. And like I said, if you, if anybody had the money could take that hill down, would be even better.
One of the things, Mr. Satterfield, is, you know, and Mr. Shaver, the site, the site plan, the site plan that I would bring, you know, to the planning commission would have to show those things, you're saying that it might not get done. Well, if it's in part of the site plan, then that's what you all want to enforce.
It is, I said, I, I don't know if, are we getting the cart before the horse by taking the pod off? I know you've got, there's a lot of work and investment goes into preparing a site plan.
Exactly.
But that, and I know these folks don't want it, some of them don't want it at all, and I understand that. I'm surprised that they didn't stand up against Emily's Landing and what's the other one, Bella's?
Because it didn't come up, it didn't come before you.
We never knew about it, we sort of didn't.
It never came up because it was already zoned for residential.
And Linnor City approved it.
I don't know if Linnor City approved it or not.
Isn't that right, Jim?
It went through the planning.
They have to approve it under our regulations though.
Yes, sir, it went through Linnor City's planning commission for approval, but the property was already zoned for residential and therefore they had the right to develop it.
So, I mean, it just goes to the planning office, it doesn't even go before the public?
No, it goes, well, it goes to the planning commission meeting, people could come and look at what's being done and express concerns that they would like, but it, just like their planning commission, it wasn't attended Linnor City's.
But, let me ask one question about that, you know, I, I do not see Linnor City planning minutes, do you get them?
No.
I mean, if there's stuff going on in the UGB and it's on their agenda in that hours, why are we not getting those?
At times Beth will send, like, we have developments that are going into the urban
growth boundary, Beth will send us her final plats in, or on occasion she'll let us know. We don't have that many, that's the current.
How much further up three twenty-one on that, on our, on the other side of the bridge were Emily's and Bella's and this is, does Linnor City's urban growth boundary go?
I think it's this property.
Is that it?
I believe this is it, yes, sir.
Okay. Can you spell your last name for me?
C.A., isn't it correct?
Daniel, okay, thank you.
Well, it's actually Gerald.
Gerald, okay.
Larry Belk, are you here for the same one?
Larry Best.
Best, okay.
I didn't think my handwriting was that bad.
I'm sorry for blowing your last name.
I'm sorry. About that, all right, actually, but it's a fun name. So, Mr. Mayor, honorable commissioners, and I got a lot of friends and neighbors here, my name's Larry Best, I live in Leona Drive, on Leona Drive, which is down Allen Shore and the first left there, so it's in Loudon Estates one, been there about ten years now. Let me give you a little background because I, I had a certain perspective on the area over the, over the last ten years. I'm, I was born, raised in the south, I left, left the south to go to West Point in nineteen sixty-eight, bounced around the world, but I always wanted to get back, I always wanted to get back. And I retired at age sixty and came back to this little slice of heaven, mostly because my, my grand, my, my son is a professor at UT, my grandson's. I bought a place on the lake, you know, for grandchildren, and it's really been great. Now, when I arrived and, you know, first started looking at that area, Loudon Estates one, I mean, on a map, on the fifty-mile map, Linnor City looked really good as a place to, to have some lakeside. I grew up on the lake in the south, I wanted to get back to that. And, you know, there's so much lake here, just such a, such a pleasure. And, you know, the issue, and it really worked out well for me because when we moved here, they were doing that huge, huge highway, you know, replacing the bridge and all that stuff. And what it basically meant was the stuff just on the south side of the dam was, was considered hard to get to and it was sort of like dead, right? So, that meant I was able to get an amazing place right on the lake with huge amounts of TDA land behind me, almost, I almost stole it, I mean, it's just, it was really, really quite a deal. But I had this theory that sooner or later, all that highway would be done, and then it would suddenly become very easy to get from Linnor City, cross the dam, and that the area would explode, it would become much, much more, it took a long, long time to finally get it. But it happened, and exactly as what I expected, happened. I mean, the amount, the amount of building north of the dam, south, excuse me, south of the dam is just unbelievable, I, I love it, I mean, who's not to love lots of new houses where you live? And really nice people, they're walking along our street, Estella Drive, views of the lake and everything like that, all really nice folks. So, as I, like I said, my predict, I predicted a long time ago that the area would explode, property values would really increase, we'd get a lot of new families moving in, working families, which is really a great thing. Because, you know, before it was sort of retirees, but now it's really much more vibrant and act. And the other thing I predicted was that a ridiculous eyesore next to three twenty-one, where you turn in Allen Shore and then Sandy Shore is right, you know, that what has, what has been sitting there for ten years, like load equipment, you know, they finally do something nice with that, finally get some services that we, that all of these new families, these working families could get other than the country kitchen. You know, I mean, the country kitchen is fine, but, you know, it'd be nice to have something a little bit more, so you don't have to go far. So, it just seemed perfect for something like, like was discussed on P and P, you know, it seemed like that's what the P and P was all about, was the idea that eventually it would become a big burgeoning area of, you know, high growth, and you need some retail services that working families would get. So, it was pretty shocking when I started hearing these rumors, that it was going to be like storage units, they're talking about putting storage units in, in that big area? I mean, what a, what, that would be such a great loss of an opportunity to have, you know, just to go with this big growth we've had in working family homes, middle-income homes, and then storage units. We have, you know, there's, there's plenty of storage units. So, all I would say is this, we're at a, we're at a very important moment in time right now, that's a very important part of Loudon County, in my humble opinion. I live there, but I guess I'm biased, but I think we want to be very careful about what we do, so, you know, what we end up with, it could, whether it's an eyesore or whether it's something that really invites people in to, to that part of Loudon County.
Mike Addus?
Yes.
You're up next unless you've said your piece.
I don't know. You know, one of the things we talked about at the meeting the last time was, you know, how low impact storage is. And, you know, on a busy day, ten people, it's about, it's a busy day, ten cars coming in, knowing, so, you know, the upgrade of roads, it'll, you know, improve that for the neighbors. And of course, the neighbors are very important to me as well because that's where you get your customers from, within about a five-mile radius. And, and, you know, you're saying that, you're saying that that's an eyesore, I build really nice storage facilities, high securities, very pleasing to the eye, and you can look at some of the locations, I'll be able to see that. And that's about it, I mean, that's, you know, today, we just want to get the pod removed, and then, of course, any plans would have to be approved further on. I have met with the property owners of Emily Landing, their board of directors, and going back to another meeting with them, twenty seconds, but they're, they're all, you know, want to be involved with what I do. And then I've met some of the people at Bella's Landing that have, we've talked and discussed it too, and nobody's, you know, really mad about it, they just want to make sure something nice is going to be theirs. And, and I can tell you, probably with my housing, if you turn them down, you'll probably see two hundred to three hundred pieces of heavy equipment sitting there, if I don't notice something. Because I know Mr. Franklin's got about four hundred pieces, and that's, I know what he uses for his, his drop yard.
Say the one that owned that before you bought it, Franklin, is still on it?
Right. So, so, you know, I want to do something very nice, I want to, you know, be involved with the community and have something that will be a benefit to them. And I've done storage for over thirty years, and the storage industry and the community go hand in hand, we offer a service to the community for like boats and RVs if they can't, like a lot of neighborhoods, you can't park stuff out in the driveways, and this will give, you know, opportunity for that. And people moving, they're needing storage, say somebody's parents move in with them, then you've got a place to put their parents' stuff, there's a lot of different reasons people use storage. And usually they bring it, they leave it, and they come and get it when they move on or whatever. So, it makes it, like I say, a very, very low-impact industry to the community as far as traffic and just cars coming and going. If you put a retail in there, you'll have cars going after another, back-to-back, very high impact. So, that's, that's what I can tell you about storage and what I would do. So, just ask the, you know, you guys, just remove the pod, it's already zoned, C two, and then I'll get a site plan made up and bring to you, and you guys have to approve it, or do anything.
Now, what would be the cost for you to do the site plan? What do those things cost?
And we would not see the site plan. The site plan, we would never see it again.
I would see it.
Well, he may.
And I voted it.
Yeah, we won't be voting on that.
I'd estimate thirty thousand, thirty, forty thousand.
To do a site plan?
Yeah. Pretty expensive, I mean, you know, you've, you've got to, you know, have all the engineering done, design, drainage, the roads.
When you plan, what's your plan to begin?
My timeframe? Right now, I'm in no big hurry because of just steel prices went up a hundred percent four months. So much of the material cost, it's just like everything else, doubled, tripled, and, you know, wait and see, wait and see what happens, and I think, let's see if the money prices drop back.
Let me ask if you'd be, if you'd do this, I don't want to, but I, I feel like the right thing to do would be to table this tonight, so you get, talk to our road superintendent, and you can find out exactly what he will do, is capable of doing or will do, and like I said, we'll need to meet and look at it again, if you come back and say, see, I can do this, and you find out how much it's going to cost, you may have to go with a private contractor to get that done, but to make any change in the road, it'd still have to go through the road superintendent, wouldn't it, through the county?
Have to get permission by all means, I don't think any of them do it, but they're not really set up for real road.
Would that be a problem to wait a little bit, let you ask a few questions, bring back some information?
Well, I, you know, I'm, I'm doing an exchange, you know, I saw mine, and so I'm doing exchange.
You can work on that one at ninety-five and three twenty-one till we get this one resolved.
Well, don't work that way, though.
Really?
What about, what about a conversation with T. Doc?
I just want to get the pod removed and then...
I would like for somebody to contact T. Doc and find out if they would allow a cut through, okay?
Well, I mean, but they may not, I mean...
That's fine, I, I just need to know if they say...
I'll, I'll do that, but that...
If they say no, and I mean, be earnest about it, tell them it's life or death that you need a cut through there, but...
There's other, there's other, you know, more places I could do this, I mean, it's not such a...
But you'd find many places with a four-lane highway coming right off of the interstate between Mariville, Linnor City, and Oxwell, it's, like the guy says, if the country couldn't beat it with a stick as far as the location for it. But I'd feel better, I'd say these folks have a concern, and I, I think, I don't know, Van probably know, or Rosemary know, the Portland Estates probably the two, the oldest subdivisions around, I mean, they've been there forever, and a lot of people have lived there since then, and I know they don't like to see, see change.
You're right, you know, always a good, good thing to do, and that's something, that the way that property is situated now and has been for seventeen years, you can't, it's, it's...
Well, I say, that's my only other thing about this, I know these people, you know, they have, I know what they're talking about, but like I said, I've traveled that road for, I've lived in the county for fifty years, and that property is sat there, and like I said, Mr. Franklin has parked his heavy equipment there for years.
Oh, I know, yeah.
And I keep thinking that somebody is going to buy, like, when I met you, I said, how did a house builder not get their hands on this piece of property? Why did they not do something?
I think that's what, Jim, you can't see most of it.
Well, if we take...
No, it can't be residential development.
It can be rezoned, can it not?
But look at the traffic, it would have been.
I know, I'm just saying, it can be, the zoning part's not a, that's not a etched-in-stone thing where you, if you do it once, it can't ever, we're getting ready to undo the hood for you, it can be rezoned, I could come to Zonkish and say, hey, you've got Bella's and you've got Lily's, we want to put some more houses here, would you rezone it for us? And that, I think they'd have to, I don't understand why somebody hadn't grabbed it up and done it, but that's not anything on you, but you, you own the property.
Well, I think that's one of the things that, you know, that I know you guys are wanting to do away with, but it's...
Oh, yes, yes, we're trying to get, we're trying to get a hold of reins and say, you know, we, we need to, we, we want to grow, but we don't look out our window and have a jack and a beanstalk growing up beside us there, but...
Yeah, I mean...
Okay, I just, all right.
Anybody have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer.
Yes, I do. You, you say storage.
Yeah.
What are you going to store in there? Is it just going to be storage buildings, or are there going to be...
It would be like a high-security fence, keypad injury, gated area.
But you're going to store boats?
Boats, RVs.
But you're not going to put boats in where they can't be seen, right?
No, they'll be covered.
They'll be covered, so they're going to be out there?
Yeah, climate control storage.
You don't climate control a boat, if it's uncovered?
I'll do all of that, I'll do non-climate and climate RV boat storage.
So, so in other words, it's not going to be just low buildings with storage in it, it's going to be big buildings?
How this supposed to work?
RVs parked under them and boats parked over them?
This is...
Well, they're canopies, but they're, but it's not, we keep saying storage, and so I think everybody envisioned that it's going to be storage buildings. But that's not what you're planning, you're planning what you see on the right-hand side of the road is with boat to Mariville, there's a big RV boat storage place there.
That's mine, that was mine.
Okay, so that's what you're planning?
That's what you're planning? Yes.
So...
Climate control, non-climate.
So, in other words, what we're going to be looking at is not some low-story building with some trees or bushes or lights or whatever, we're going to be looking at boats stored and big RVs stored under canopies.
Some of that, yeah, all right.
Okay, we've heard you, and we'll move on with the meeting, it'll be under item number six.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaddus.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Did you have something you want to say?
Oh, just one, couple comments real quick, just, I don't know if the commission's aware, we already have two storage facilities within a stone's throw of where that potentially would go. One is on three twenty-one, on the right-hand side as we're traveling toward...
Mr. Williams.
Right, and then there's another one right before that, behind the church up on the hill. So, that leads me to my second point, I don't think anyone inside of Fort Loudon Estates one, Emily's Landing, or Bella's Landing will get any practical use out of this application as it's being spoke here. If it has been something like I've heard of, since I've bought a place there and I now have lived there for almost eight years, my wife's super excited, maybe a Kroger, at least I get some direct benefit out of that eyesore or that potential problem that we're going to have. Because going with anything that's going to go on there, Allen Shore has to be dealt with, if there is no other access from three twenty-one, there is going to be a big problem to be figured out, and that's going to take a lot from a lot of different people. But my personal perspective, I plan on living in that area for another fifty, sixty years, I'm a younger family in there, I'm friends with the younger families in there, including Emily, Emily's Landing, Bella's Landing, well, a couple are there, don't know their particulars in those, but the ones that I'm closer to, we're definitely expecting to get something more retail-driven or service that we will actually be using, because I'm not aware of anybody that's really, really close to us that uses either of the two storage facilities that are within a quarter mile of where this location will be. Going back on her point, it also brings up a good one, the facility size, I had not even thought about that, looking at one flat row, you know, a couple RVs over here, a couple things over here, not a big deal, you start going climate control and multiple levels, and that's, that becomes quite the eyesore that is going to be there for a long time. The Mr. Franklin Parkinson equipment there, that's going to be gone one day, one day that will move, it is not permanent.
It's still not, it's not as appealing though as a nice, neat...
I would rather not look, I would rather look at that for ten years and then something nice go in there for forty, that's my perspective.
We, we got you, Jim.
So, there's a lot of perspectives that are very similar, those things will go, and they are there sometimes and they're not, and my sons love them, they think they're so cool. We drive by and they like it, so I still get a little bit of gratification out of those eyesores that I have to pass every single day. So, if you guys would keep that in, in your minds, and if you were even aware that those two facilities were there, I see no reason for more storage to go in where there's already two other facilities located. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I've asked Commissioner Shaver to open the meeting with a pledge and a prayer.
Do you have a police staff or a pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, governed under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for another beautiful day here on earth and for taking care of us and watching over us. Give us, give us the discernment to do the right thing for our constituents, help us to be the kind of people we need to be, help us to reflect you in everything that we do, remember all the folks out there right now that, that are having bad times, sickness, death, illnesses of all kinds, comfort and be with those people. Watch over all of us, watch over all these folks here in our audience tonight, their travels home, and just keep everybody safe, bless us all, in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Okay, Tammy, call and roll.
Where you start?
Here.
Mears, early, Tinker?
Here.
Satterfield?
Here.
Whitfield?
Here.
Tullman?
Here.
Depp?
Here.
Shaver?
Here.
Waller?
Okay. All right, next up is the adoption of the agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as it has been amended.
Okay, the two amended items are, we remove the solid waste commission discussion because they're meeting tomorrow night, and they'll be here at our workshop next week at six o'clock. Buddy's adding a committee for the storage building that he wants to talk about, those are the only two changes. We have a motion by Commissioner Shaver, do we have a second?
Second.
We got a second by Commissioner Whitfield, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, agenda, agenda has been adopted, next up is the reading and acceptance of the April fourth, two thousand twenty-two Loudon County Commission Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes as they were sent to us, and we've all had time to read them.
Okay, Mr. Shaver, Commissioner Shaver has made a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We got a second by Commissioner Satterfield, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are accepted. Pat Hunter's the only one that signed up under general public comments, so Pat, step to the podium, tell us what's on your mind.
My comments will be very brief, my name is Pat Hunter, and I think I spoke to County Commission about this, maybe a meeting or two ago, and that is in regards to the community TV three and recording the meetings. I think it would be nice, and I'm going to make a request, that our planning meetings be recorded. I think that the community has shown ample, I guess they've been very enthusiastic about planning issues, and I think that recording this meeting would be very important because of that interest to the community. And we fund TV three every year, and it seems to me that the planning meetings should be added to that list of recordings. In my opinion, if we have the camera here, and all it takes is to turn on the camera, turn it on to start and turn it off to end, that it's not asking too much, most especially with all the interest about pods, planning, and all the issues that come before the planning commission and this commission, thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Is planning recorded at all currently?
No.
I think, I think it should be recorded.
Well, the ultimate end goal be we record and televise everything, every meeting we have is yours.
And I don't even know if TV three is the, I mean, it's on YouTube Live, so if somebody just go to YouTube and watch it, I don't know, it has to be on TV three, I don't know if it's just that piece of it.
Yeah, just to be recorded.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Jim, you're back up for the three items.
I make a motion, we forego the second reading of the same thing.
All in favor, yeah.
Okay, we got a motion not to reread them, do we have a second?
Yeah, we're all in agreement.
Okay. All right, number eight.
I got just one quick question, does that get rid of all of the remaining? It does. Okay, motion to take the recommendation of the planning commission. Second motion.
And that's on the closing of Woody Creek?
Yes.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Waller, second by Mr. Commissioner Shaver, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries, so that is approved. Okay, item B.
Oh, that's me, I make a motion, we table this for the time being until I get some concrete plans.
Second motion.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Satterfield to table item B, second by Commissioner Shaver, any further discussion?
Please ask T. Doc about the, the cut through and get a, a firm reply from my county road superintendent on what he can and cannot do. Now then, you can call for the pod.
Okay, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item B is tabled. C.
Mr. Chairman, that's the Commissioner Duff and I as district, went up, looked at, met with folks today, and all looks good. I'll make a motion, we accept these roads in. I believe, Jim, if I'm not mistaken, Old Hickory was already in, wasn't it?
I believe it was, when I looked it up on the county road list, it wasn't on there, so I thought we could make sure.
Well, it's, it's done now, so yes, Mr. Chairman, that's the form of a motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Duff has seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's approved.
Thank you, have a good.
Have a good trip back, Jim. Okay, next up is Susan Husky on the insurance.
Mr. Chairman, one second. That part's done, if y'all wanna stay, please enjoy yourself, it's gonna get more boring than it's been. If you don't wanna stay, you're welcome to leave, the discussion on the, the 321 property's done.
Okay, there you go.
I'd say you're welcome to stay. We're gonna get into budgets and amendments and all the fun stuff.
Susan? We'll be having a purchase information next, right? Okay, that's our, isn't that our regular workshop?
Capital projects, you mean?
I've been capital projects, sorry. Okay, so we will be next week.
Good afternoon. Request approval of the 2022.
Make a motion, we approve it.
I'll second.
Trace, this is stuff we talked about, right?
This is the 2.95 increase?
Yeah, we've covered it in budget and workshops, yeah, motion, motion approved.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, second by Commissioner Brewster. Any further discussion? Okay, there's money involved, it's a roll call vote, call or roll.
Tinker?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Come back around.
Whitfield?
Yes.
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 Oh, there you are.
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Depp?
Yes.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
All right, the next item, I'll explain it and I'll tell you why. I've spent a lot of time on the phone with T-Deck today and the Friday. T-Deck has put a grant out, and I'll tell you, thank God for the feds. We received 3.725 billion from the art funds. It went to T-Deck, they allocated $4 million to Loudon County. As you know, it's for water improvements, it doesn't say sewer, but it says water. TASK was here at the last meeting, they submitted their plan, they're submitting it on to T-Deck. Tellico Village POA, and we have Marty Ingraham, the president, we have Mitzi Lang, and we have Clayton Taylor. Put a plan together, and in order for them to submit it, we have to review it and give them the okay to submit it. We have no involvement in the match or anything, and we have no involvement in how much they get. That's purely up to T-Deck, and it's done on a collaborative basis. I don't know what their scorecard is, but Mitzi, tell us what you plan to do when you submit it.
You all have that information in your pockets.
Is that this one?
It is.
Thank you.
Yep, I'll say good evening.
Is it this one or the other one? Let's start with this one.
Perfect. Clayton Taylor's here with us, this is our director of public work, so I won't take up too much of your time. Other than to say thank you to Henry, thank you to Buddy, we've already kind of met with them a couple of times to talk about it. But what we did is we actually met with the TAUD, and Clayton will talk about that in a moment, but they did do our scorecard, and so with that scorecard, they tell us what our critical needs are. And as you can imagine in Tellico Village, we now have over 5,200 homes, 10,000 residents, 350 homes of which are under construction right now, currently. And so what we got was a water system report and a service system report with the costs associated with it. Well, obviously the cost far more exceed than the four million that T-Deck had, had given to Loudon County. So we would like to submit our application, we've already submitted to T-Deck what's called a letter of intent. There's really no information on there other than, hey, we would like to apply for this grant. Loudon City, we've got, let's see how much they got, 1.5 million directly from T-Deck already. Lenore City, 1.5, I'm sorry, Loudon City 1.1, Lenore City 1.5. So since Tellico Village, you know, is not a municipality, we would have to go through Loudon County in order to obtain any of the grants, and Loudon County is just our conduit in order for us to get that directly from T-Deck. So with that said, I'd like for Clayton, I'll get out of your way, but real quick.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that the money given to the cities come out of the four million dollars?
It does not, that's separate, they got their own funds. They have their own funds, so, but I'll let Clayton real quickly tell you a little bit about what we would like to do, what our plans are, where some of our upgrades would actually be collaborative with LUB and would actually help LUB in the long run, so.
Just, just real quick, Mr. Chairman. TASK, we own TASK.
Yeah, I know that.
So we have, we have to approve TASK application. What do you need from us?
An approval to submit it.
I mean, why do you need anything from Loudon County?
Because I don't give directly Tellico Village any funds, it's a grant out there for water and sewer service providers, and we fall under that, but we didn't get the money directly, just the municipalities did. So we have to work under Loudon County as your government.
According to T-Deck this morning, the mayor has the okay to send it through, but since the mayor doesn't have a vote and we're the legislative body, I think we have to look at it, is that right, Buddy?
Right.
Well, let me, let me go ahead and get one out of the way, let me go ahead and make a motion, we approve TASK. Let's get TASK, we've got two separate things here, so let's get TASK done, and then we'll fall into line with whatever they're gonna do.
Okay, I'll enter.
I just had one question, if you, if you don't mind, but did we talk about this at the last workshop?
TASK, we did.
Yeah, but not the second.
Mark Clinton was here, this one, because they're on a timeline, we put it on tonight.
We, they can start accepting applications in June.
Oh. And when does the application deadline end?
They just start taking them in June and they end when everybody's turned in.
Seems like we're gonna talk about it at the workshop, I think.
Yeah, yeah, not really, there's, there's some municipalities that may not turn this grant application in at all. And if that's the case, that money then would go in a pot, and at the end of the year, they're gonna take additional requests for grant money.
So if they approve yours, the money would come to Loudon County and we would in turn
That's correct.
distribute it to your.
Will you even do that?
For TASK, you do.
Well, I got a motion for TASK.
We own TASK.
Yeah, we own TASK.
Well, under the rules, it now takes into account the private systems. And again, I'm not the, I don't have a PhD in T-Deck grants. But talking to T-Deck this morning, it would then come through, they're responsible for the match. So all we're doing is saying, hey, we looked at the plan, submit it, and hopefully T-Deck will do something.
And like administratively, we wouldn't have Loudon County be keeping up with the grant, what we spent, we would be responsible for turning that into T-Deck on, you know, on their timeframe, whenever they would request certain.
But who's on the hook if you don't turn it in? These are all good workshop questions, I think. Well, I would like Bob Bowman to give us an answer. Well, I don't think we better vote on this.
I got a motion on TASK, I need a second.
I will second your motion on TASK.
Let's get that one out of the way.
Okay, we got a motion, do we have a second on TASK's plan?
Here it is.
Gary Whitfield. Okay, any further discussion on TASK?
So TASK was discussed at the workshop.
Yeah.
It's in her pocket.
Okay, any further discussion for TASK only? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The next one is Tellico Village's plan.
Do you want me to midway fight and kind of give you a quick update on what it is we would like to do?
Sure, go ahead.
We won't go through those slides, by the way, he's just gonna do it.
Yeah, I want a water system. We are at the point that in the future, we will be, we, we've been working with LUB over the last couple of years, and they've done some upgrades or in the process of doing some upgrades on their side. And then we'll be doing some on ours, which will be about a nine million dollar project by the time it's all done, with some booster stations, where we can get the water pressure to where it needs to be throughout the village. That's the main thing on the water system, we would be putting those after connections of LUB, which is at Maple Hill, Little Valley, and, uh, Popper, uh, Popper Ridge. And so we would be putting those in, and on the water system, but the main thing that we'd be focusing on too would be sewer upgrades. And I, I know right now during a heavy rainstorm, LUB has some problems handling the, the sewer coming into their sewer treatment plant, so that, that doesn't allow us to get our sewer into the treatment plant. So what we would like to do is we would build a, a pump, a, a tank. That way, when LUB's not letting us pump into their system, we can help, we're pumping into a holding tank. And, and we work closely with LUB, those guys work great, not saying anything bad about them. You know, and then, when they would call and say, hey, we can take your sewer, then we could pump it on to Loudon County.
How far are y'all from a TASK sewer line?
We, we have reached out to Mark Clinton about that, and the backside of Tellico Village is by a mail road, and their closest would be at Industrial Park.
Tellico West.
Yeah, so that would be, we've been talking to them about running sewer on down there.
Do you know what the cost would be versus what you're asking now?
Miss Clinton didn't seem, you know, real excited about wanting to do that, I think he had some concern with future development in industrial work and stuff.
Well, I know, they've got plenty of capacity, I just didn't know.
I just got.
That is certainly something we'd be absolutely willing to work with.
Seven miles worth of seven?
I just.
Six.
My, my concern is what, what liability the county has if we act as a pass through, that's my concern. I'm not opposed to, I just like to have some kind of assurance we have no liability, not a bid. I'm with you, I mean, I don't have any issues with, it sounds like, you know, it's just not, we're not doing following the procedures that have been set up that we're supposed to follow.
This is a unique situation.
I don't see why we can't wait till next week, since next week is our workshop, and this would go.
And June 6.
You can't apply until June.
June 6 anyways, and I just like to know from Bob Bowman, what kind of liability we're setting ourselves up. God forbid you put it in, something horribly goes wrong, and then who's on the hook for that grant being repaid, you know? That's, that's.
When I talked to T-Deck, I asked that question. And they said it goes, if they approve it, they're gonna take care of it. And the only thing they have to ensure, and I guess Clayton would be the person that he'll manage.
We own TASK.
We own TASK, I mean, we have a same task.
Now, I asked Mr. Clinton every time he ever shows up here, and he was looking forward to me asking him. Now, if y'all go belly up, we're on the hook for that, and he says, yes, you are, that's, that's just mine, his thing we've done for years, so. I don't know how this kind works with us not having ownership of any kind.
Here's what I know, according to T-Deck, all we have to do is say, hey, that's a good plan, submit it.
But then, Ms. Blair, do we have to accept that grant money before we distribute it, or how does that work?
It sounds, this is through ARPA, if I'm hearing correctly, that's correct, and so, you know.
Not ours, not our ARPA.
No, no.
Not, not let's change it to ARPA, but then there's an amount that has been set aside appropriated or whatever that could be utilized in Loudon County. And there are all kinds of differences, I guess, with ARPA, and we are learning as we go on that. With other ARPA funding, even if the, if it was a portion that was assigned to the county or awarded to the county, then the county would be responsible, ultimately responsible for making sure that everything was done correctly. This was not assigned to the county federally, it was assigned to T-Deck. So this is one of those things that I would have to do some checking on, just to make sure that we were correct. It was assigned to T-Deck, right?
Yes, you're exactly correct, and what, it triggered me to think also, what T-Deck did then is the way they distributed it to the cities and the counties was based on population, that's Loudon got four million based on the population Loudon County did, I mean, so that's kind of how T-Deck came up with how they were gonna fund all the municipalities, who would then kind of be a conduit for water and sewer service providers. It just so happens Loudon County is not a water sewer, sewer service provider.
And what I'm hearing, and what I'm hearing, is what I'm hearing is Tracy says she needs to do some checking on this financially also.
So what kind of specs would it have? If we put this on the workshop next Monday and it's approved on the, on June 6?
That would be fine.
I didn't, I didn't know of a workshop, we just, we just came today. What is the date of the workshop?
June 6.
Oh, it's June 6.
No, no, no. No, no, I'm sorry, workshop's Monday.
Okay, that's fine.
Voting against June 6, sorry, my apologies.
I mean, we, we'll have to work with it, so.
I just wanna make sure we're cutting our tail ends. We need to follow our procedures.
Yes, we do need to follow procedures.
And, and I'm like everybody else, I don't, I mean, I don't foresee an issue, but I wanna do my homework first.
Sure.
And I think, like I said, we, since it was the same as TASK, we give it a shot at it and see, but.
We have a save over TASK, we have no save over them.
Well, there are a lot of questions out there too, so I think.
Just give us a little time to look it over.
Let Tracy do her thing, let Bob Bowman give us some kind of direction between now and next Monday, and we're talking.
He's the county attorney.
We're late, so we'll have, we're just a week from workshop.
I think we go, bring it to workshop, be ready to vote it on the first, and y'all have all everything lined up, and just gonna make that deadline pretty easy.
I hope they get it personally, but I love.
I do too, I don't have any money out there for people in the county, I just.
But anyway, we'll put it on Monday the 16th, oh, yeah, no, 12th.
No, 16th.
16th. We'll put it on next Monday and it'll go on to June's commission meeting. Okay, thank you, Mitzi, Marty, Clayton. Okay. Tracy Blair.
Well, thank you, sir. The first item is consideration of recommendation to approve application and acceptance of a $60,000 Ebro grant. Ebro grant, this is for the senior center, and this is for next fiscal year, the budget committee recommends approval. There are no matching funds.
Make a motion, we approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, second by Commissioner Brewster. Any further discussion? There's money involved, call or roll.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Tinker, I'll pass you, I'm sorry, you should have been first.
Do you want me to go now?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
And Cullen?
Yes.
Depp?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yeah.
Waller?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of approving resolutions for the amendments and the funds that are listed on the agenda. Commissioners should have received draft copies of resolutions that are associated with each one of these. As I reviewed the resolutions, this requirement to send these to the comptroller's office, this makes it a little bit easier for commission to see, just have a quick synopsis of the, the effect of the amendments that you are approving, because you can see those in a separate column, and then you can see what your amended budget look like, and as well as the revised projected ending fund balance for the fiscal year. So we will have a resolution that accompanies all, that accompanies all amendments and every fund from this point forward. The budget committee recommends approval of all of these.
Make a motion, we approve, one through A.
Second.
We got a motion by Commissioner Whitfield, second by Commissioner Shaver to approve one through eight. Any further discussion? Okay, call or roll, Tavich.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Depp?
Yes.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Tinker?
Because I'm employee of the Board of Education, I have a conflict of interest in proposal about to be voted. However, declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this party represents. Aye, or yes?
Okay, motion carries.
And summary financial statements for the month of April and minutes of the budget committee meeting for the month of March were distributed prior to the meeting, and requesting that the records reflect those distributions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tracy. Commissioner Mears is not here. Commissioner Mears is not here.
I'll be taking care of that, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'd like to put a motion on the floor that we recommend bonds and notaries for the names listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver for the bonds and notaries, seconded by Commissioner Waller. Any further discussion?
Let's hear it, man.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, they're approved.
Chairman, I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We, no, we got his.
He had something to add, that's right. I'll read all my motions.
I would draw my second. Reluctantly.
Don't leave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, just put it together, committee, kind of oversee the addition, record storage of the Loudoun Library. Names I have, and I would ask this to be fluid, is if I may offer in front of our new commissioners from this side of the river to take part once the sewer, if it's not done by then, maybe done by then, or at least underway. Commissioner Whitfield, myself, Commissioner Satterfield, Commissioner Waller, and Kate, who is the librarian at the library. I would ask for that to be a committee forum, just as an advisory steering committee type.
Make a motion, we approve.
I'll second.
We got a motion by Commissioner Shaver to approve the Record Storage Committee, seconded by Commissioner Brewster.
Could you read those names again?
Can you read them one more time?
Commissioner Whitfield, Kate, I know her last name just plain as day, I can't think of it.
Librarian?
Yes, myself.
Kate Claybo?
Claybo, yes. Commissioner Satterfield, Commissioner Waller.
Okay, which one of those members has construction experience? Anyways. Oh.
There's Bob.
Yeah, yeah.
There's Bob, buddy.
Well, they don't count.
Okay, that's, that's six. There's six in there.
Six.
Some of the commissioners take account five.
Waller's that for, buddy. Kate, Waller, Whitfield. You said Waller twice.
Yeah.
Oh, well...
He's the most educated one of the bunch of us sitting here, so.
Tinker is.
Put his name on twice.
I want them to have two votes.
Is that all, buddy?
Ms. Husky, has that? Have you done your due diligence in the architecture department?
Thank you. Make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, we haven't approved them yet.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we've got a motion and a signed it.
I saw you had Tinker going here.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, your committee is done, Mayor.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
We got a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Oh, you second? I'll second.
All right, we got a, Commissioner Brewster seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. All right.